Is there a motion to open the meeting?
Scott moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
I opened up the voting.
Perfect.
I'm just looking in now.
Okay, we're good.
We're good. Now that we're open, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With that, we will move to public input number one. So if there's anybody from the public here that would like to make a statement, a comment, or ask a question, now would be the time you can raise your hand or enter a question into the chat room. I don't see anything in the chat room. Any hands up, Scott? I see no, no hands up. So with that, we will move on to item five on tonight's agenda, the superintendent's report. Jeff? I can't hear Jeff. Are you there, Jeff? Is anybody hearing Jeff?
No.
Okay.
Do you want me to run down?
It looks like his.
Just text him.
Scott's the one who put up the presentation.
Right.
I can walk down because you'll be up next, Brittany.
I'll text him in the meantime.
Okay, so we're just gonna give him a minute, see if Jeff can get in.
Maybe someone should text him and tell him to sign off and sign back in.
Yep.
I'll do that. Sign off and sign. Back in.
Hope I'm not supposed to be able to.
Brian, when, if and when Jordana and Alex come in, let me know.
Jordana is here.
Okay, so I'm gonna go to roll call and I'm gonna flip Jordana.
If you could add Jordana and Alex will be here shortly.
Thank you.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Yeah.
How about the screen? Is that working?
Yeah, the screen is working.
All right, well, Brittany just fixed that. So you guys can see and hear me now.
We can hear you.
I can see you too.
Okay.
Good. I have a new computer and I guess we haven't worked the kinks out, so I apologize. But I was gonna talk tonight really about COVID and the current status in our community and provide an overview on some pertinent issues and then open it up for some questions. I'll start by just giving you the, the big picture in New York State. Yesterday, there were 1,968 hospitalizations, and that's the largest number since May 10th. We've heard that there was going to be a second wave as the weather got colder. It's pretty safe to say that it's here. And we're seeing it across the state and certainly in Suffolk County. In terms of our district, as of today, we've had four positive test results. We have 22 students who are quarantined and we have five staff who are quarantined. And basically, when you can be subject to a quarantine under a few different conditions. One is obviously that you test positive for the virus, in which case you're quarantined for 10 days from the onset of symptoms. And that applies to almost all situations, although you could have a longer quarantine period if you have more serious, a more serious version of COVID in terms of your symptoms. You also could be, you could be in a household where there's a positive case, and in that instance, you're supposed to quarantine for 14 days from the last close contact. In other words, the last time that you had interacted with that person for 15 minutes over a 24-hour period. It also could be somebody outside of your household that you run across who you have had close contact with. And again, in that instance, you would quarantine for 14 days. So, big picture in terms of the spread in the school, as of today, we have not seen a significant spread. So in those four cases in the school, they were relatively contained. We didn't see significant spread where other people got the disease, and that's good news. And that suggests that at least for the time being, the system, the systems that we have in place are effective in limiting the spread of the virus while in school. Having said that, we are, as an area, in terms of Suffolk County, approaching a a level of test positive rates and hospitalizations that will sort of interface with what we call micro cluster zones. So let me start out by just giving you a quick overview of, of what they are. Micro cluster zones are something that the governor set up to try to control what he knew was ultimately coming, which was an increase in test positive rates and infection rates in communities. And basically, he has, he established three categories, yellow, orange, and red, with yellow being the least serious and red being the most serious. For the purposes of tonight's discussion, I'm gonna touch upon, well, I'll touch on all three. Yellow, in order to be classified as a yellow zone, you have to have a seven-day test positive rolling average of two and a half percent for 10 days or more. So, seven-day average. Once you hit that 2.5 level, you've got to have it for 10 days in succession, and then you would be designated a yellow school, or a yellow zone, rather. Orange, the same framework, if you will, but it's not two and a half percent, it's 3%. And red, which is the most serious, again, the same framework, but not two and a half, not three, but 4%. Now, the significance of each of these zones is that with each zone comes some restrictions in terms of how school districts can operate. Yellow, yellow, the restrictions pertain mostly to testing. So if you're designated a yellow zone, you have to administer tests to 20% of your population over a two-week period. And the way that testing's supposed to roll out, at least in, in principle, is the school district requests the tests from the local health department, which in our case is Suffolk County Department of Health, who will in turn receive those tests from New York State. We, the school district, then are charged with administering those tests. And there's training that can be accessed for school personnel, nurses, and perhaps others that we may have to hire to administer those tests. And then those tests are sent out to a local lab, if you will. And then we get those test results back and we input them into the system. So logistically, a lot of districts, not only Sag Harbor, are quite concerned about tackling the testing piece related to being designated a yellow zone. I'm more concerned right now about being designated an orange zone. You know, basically, right now, our, my analysis, actually, it was our nurses' analysis of the test positive rate suggested that the first day we were north of 3% was the 13th of November. Yesterday, we were 3.7%. So if everything sort of stays consistent, and I have no reason to think that the numbers are gonna go down in the next week or so, I think we're looking potentially at an orange designation status on November 22nd. And the significance of that is that if you're an orange school, or an, if you're, you're a school located in an orange zone, you must close. So, and when I say close, you have to go to all remote status. There are there are ways to reopen, and I'll briefly touch upon that. If you are a, a school located in an orange zone and you want to reopen, you have to let a minimum of four days elapse. And then, at that point, to reopen, you have to ensure that no person attends who doesn't receive a negative COVID test prior to re-entering the school. So that is a pretty big hurdle to cross. That means theoretically, if we're an orange, if we're an orange county on November 22nd and we shut school, no one is permitted back in the school for a minimum of four days. And then beyond that, the only people admit, who could be admitted would, would be those students, staff, students and staff who test negative. And then, once you go through that initial period, then there's an ongoing requirement to test 25% of the population in a rotating basis every two weeks. So my experience with the state thus far, although they're very well-intentioned, and I think they've done a good job for the most part, is that as we get closer to November 22nd, this guidance, as it's currently written, that may very well change. And what I mean by that is there is talk about trying to drill down with more specificity beyond Suffolk County. So that they may not, they, being New York State, may not say Suffolk County is an orange zone, and they may get into zip codes or smaller areas, which would provide more flexibility to keep some schools open and perhaps not others. But again, as it currently stands, I think we are in danger, that is Suffolk County, of being identified as an orange zone as of November 22nd, unless things change. So, you know, those were the, the big things I wanted to cover with regard to where we're at with COVID, starting with where we are, big picture with New York State in terms of the total number of hospitalizations and referencing that to what happened back in May. I will say that in, at the height of the virus in, in April, mid-April, hospitalizations were closer to, to 19,000. So as a frame of reference, even though we hit 1,900 yesterday, that's still, you know, roughly one-tenth of, of where we were at, at the height of pandemic. Anyway, starting with the big picture, then going into where we were at, or where we are at with COVID infections in Sag Harbor and the, and the related quarantines, and then ending with a definition of the micro cluster framework and the likelihood, unless something changes, that we're going to receive an orange status, that is Suffolk County, in and around the 22nd of November. And then the implications for school closing, and then how it would go about reopening. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Let me go first to board members. Are there any board member questions for Jeff?
I have one question. You, you referenced November 22nd. Is that when we would get the notification, or we get a notification ahead of time that might have an implication of us being able to be in person or remote on November 22nd?
November 22nd, based on the mathematical analysis that I've looked at, would be the 10th day that we would have a seven-day average above 3%. So, so in answer to your question, I would think that we would get notification from the state if they're true to their metrics. We would get notification on the 22nd as to our, as to closing.
So if, if the numbers continue to hold or get worse during the course of this week, by the end of the week, we might anticipate that we may have to be remote next week, and we would have time to prepare for that.
I think, I think I'm making that, I think we're, I think I'm planning on that right now, not even the end of the week.
Okay.
And Jeff, then the reopening would be the, the following week, under the guidelines that you currently have? So we would be working toward seeing logistically how that would work?
Correct. We'd be exploring the notion of becoming essentially a, a test site and, and coordinating with local, perhaps the hospital, perhaps local doctors, to help us facilitate that process.
And you're working on that currently, or making inquiry, inquiries?
Inquiries about it. The Suffolk County School Superintendent's Association has been issuing guidance daily regarding, you know, trying to tackle this. I will say that there are, in general, school districts have pretty significant reservations and fears about being test centers. For a variety of reasons. Number one, that's not what we were, as educators, trained to do. Number two, there are some insurance considerations that we've gotta, you know, look into and, and make sure we can do that and do it all legally. And then lastly, you know, there's, there's probably some concerns, or at least from my perspective, about liability as well if we take on that role. But again, if this is what our government is asking us to do, and we decide as a district we want to reopen, then we've gotta, you know, this is what we have to do.
I would just add that, because it just, in terms of like the November 22nd being like a, a magic number, right? That's the math, mathematical number that we've come up with based on kind of our, our numbers to date. But I, I find what's really important is on that last column of the slide that we're looking at, that last paragraph, that it's really all up to the Department of State. So November 22nd could come and go. And it's really, it's just that, you know, the health department, they will designate us as a yellow zone, orange zone, or red zone. It's not purely based on the metrics.
Correct.
So I just think, just to be clear there, because I just wasn't sure that it was completely clear before. And so it, it's really, it's really just up to them, and it can be subjective. So they could decide we're one tomorrow, if they feel like it's really concerning, or they could decide that we're not one at all.
Yeah. And my suspicion is, you, you're absolutely correct. History has shown us that the guidance changes as you get closer to an anticipated, you know, benchmark, and that the government adjusts if they see that a result is not palatable to the broader community. And I think that's what you're gonna be getting in Suffolk County pretty soon. So I wouldn't be surprised if either the, it's no longer a county that's classified, but more likely municipalities, or there's an adjustment to the, to the metrics themselves in terms of the percentages. But at this point, that's, that's speculative.
Yeah, I think also in that last column, that first paragraph of it talks about kind of the zip code by zip code analysis. You know, five new cases per day on a seven-day average of a population with 10,000 or more residents. So I can see, just based on the numbers we're seeing reported, at least in the East Hampton Star, because they provide such local numbers. It looks like, you know, Southampton could qualify in the zip code status really soon. And the way the numbers are reported in the East Hampton Star for Sag Harbor, it's just village only. So it's unclear how those town of Southampton numbers impact our school district.
Right.
Jeff, it's your turn.
Hi, it's your turn.
How are you? So I remember like earlier, like Cuomo mentioned about 9% that if infection rates goes above 9%, that's when they're gonna close schools. So are these numbers, percentages, like updated numbers, based on different metrics?
Yes. In answer to your question, yes. So what you were referring to was back in August, when we were first considering reopening schools, he came out with two metrics at the time. One was that if the test positive rate statewide was north of 5%, he wouldn't open schools. And then he said that once we opened, in order for him to shut schools, it would have to be north of 9%. But that's since changed with these, the metrics associated with the micro clusters. Cuomo did come out and say today that he reiterated that he thinks schools are one of the safest places to the extent that, you know, it's a tightly controlled environment. And thus far, that assessment has been pretty accurate. In other words, you haven't seen schools in New York State, or internationally for that matter, be epicenters of spread. So there, that is a, a counter consideration when you're talking about, you know, closing schools. And that is that, for the most part, right now, and thus far, they have not been significant spreaders of COVID. I will say a qualifying statement is that when the, the test positive rates in the community are relatively low, it is likely that schools will not be epicenters of spread. But as the test positive rate goes up in the community, then it's likely that spread will happen in the schools more significantly. It's just science, if you will.
So walk me through again. So let's say we, we come to the 22nd, and then consecu, we have to have like 10 consecutive days above the 3%, right?
You have to have 10 consecutive days of a seven-day average
Okay.
of 3%.
Okay. And then who's gonna notify us if we're in that?
The Department of Health. And that's what Jordana was saying before is that ultimately, even though these metrics exist, the discretion to, to perhaps act outside of what we've talked about tonight rests with the Department of Health. And my experience thus far is that everything is somewhat malleable throughout this. In other words, the guidelines, the goalposts change and have changed throughout. So I would not be surprised if between now and the 22nd, there's an adjustment to either the metrics or how it's applied. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board questions for Jeff?
I have. Trying to turn my video on, sorry.
Mary, we have Alex.
Hi, Alex.
Hi, I was late. What is, what, any thinking about that week after Thanksgiving in particular? I know there's a lot of, a lot of considerations there, not just to the percentage positive rate, but just to the fact that a lot of people might travel or have, have other interactions that, that particular week could be particularly problematic. Any thoughts about that?
I've considered that, thought about it quite a lot, not only thinking about one week after Thanksgiving, but perhaps even a longer closure or a longer switch to remote. I know that there are districts, there's one district on the North Fork that decided to go remote, remote from right after Thanksgiving break through January 4th. And, and other districts are considering it. What I try to do is to go back to the conditions on the ground. And for me, what's been very important to look at, and it's just one perspective, but it's an important perspective, is what have, what's transpired with regard to the positive tests in our school district thus far? Has there been significant spread, or have we been able to contain it, at least to our knowledge? And thus far, the four instances of test positives, it has not spread. So, so although I, I, I was sort of all over the place, my thought currently is that we stay on the path we're on, be prepared as a community that this could change quite rapidly. In other words, tonight I could say, look, we intend to stay in session and not go remote over Thanksgiving. We could have a different assessment four or five days from now, depending on conditions on the ground. But that's my assessment currently.
Thanks. Sorry about that. Any other board questions, or does anybody from the public here that has a question? You can raise your hand or put a question into the chat room. I don't see any hand raised. I don't see anything in the chat room. Any other board questions, comments, or thoughts for Jeff? Or in general, with respect to COVID and testing? Jeff, I have one. In terms of getting testing kits from the Department of Health in the state, have we inquired as to the availability of those?
Yeah, we've, we're communicating with other superintendents right now and sort of modeling what we do after their experience. So we'll make more inquiries later this week, but one of our neighboring districts is in the process of trying to set up a test site and has been guaranteed 400 tests a day. So we're gonna see how that goes and then, and then make our inquiries.
And then we have to have district personnel to conduct those tests as the way I understand the state mandate at this point.
Correct. So, and, and that in and of itself is a, is a separate issue in terms of getting people to do that. I have talked to our school attorney about our ability to mandate testing. And I think that that's probably a, a discussion for executive session as it relates to some contractual issues.
Okay, we will address that.
It's a quick question on that one. So how would it work? Because, you know, from what I've heard from other schools, usually you get the PCR test, you take it home at night, they swab like in the nose, and then they just bring it like and deliver it to someone at the school, and then it's sent out. So the test is not actually done at the school. It's done at a So the test is not actually done at the school, it's done at home.
Are you talking about private schools, your goes, or at public schools?
Private school. So that's why, I don't know if it has been applied to public schools, but that's why I'm trying to get more information. So is it something we're supposed to do in school, or is it something that's been done at home and then it's brought at school and it's shipped out?
So the information I have thus far is what's available on the New York State website, which is, it's not really that, all that detailed, other than what I've shared with you this evening, which is that we're supposed to request the tests from the local Department of Health, who then in turn gets those tests from New York State. And so, and again, that's going to be necessitated by being classified either a yellow and orange, orange status. And I believe in looking at the guidance, that orange status carries with it both rapid tests and PCR tests, whereas I think yellow is just rapid, but I'll confirm that.
Any other questions or thoughts on that? Seeing or hearing no questions, we can move on to our item 6.1, which is the principal's report.
So Brian, with regard to the principal's report, we're not going to have an elementary report evening. The middle school, high school principal's report is mostly going to focus on remote learning and the response to COVID. So I think we should skip this and address the principal's report within the context of the educational report.
Okay. And when we get to that one under item seven, we'll hear from Ms. Carriero. Let's move to item 6.2, the athletic and wellness report.
Mr. Bramoff, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Nichols, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. In light of the superintendent's report, I almost feel as if the athletic report is kind of secondary at the moment, but I will give you an update as to where we are as of 12:00 PM today. As slated, stand that we're going to have our winter season begin on January 12th with our, excuse me, January 4th. Our high risk sports such as basketball and wrestling are going to be on hold. They're currently on a pause. Our modified sports are also going to begin on January 4th. And then as we move into that winter season, the only things that are off the table right now, assuming that we, we can have a season, will be those high risk sports. To, to just project out even a little further, March 1st, the fall season would take place. And that would begin with the modified season or the middle school season beginning on March 22nd. And then we also have spring sports scheduled to begin on April 26th. I have a lot more in-depth analysis about which sports ball and which categories in terms of state championships and culminating events and schedules. However, I don't think it would be wise at this time to speculate anything past what's directly in front of us. And so as of now, the athletic department is preparing for January 4th start of the winter season. It will be a slightly condensed season with the guarded optimism that we'll be able to conduct a indoor sports, i.e. basketball or wrestling. If we do have to, if we do get the chance to run these seasons, our, our school is equipped with the ability. If we set a no spectator policy or a limited spectator policy, we do have the ability to livestream all varsity contacts, contests through our huddle contract. Again, the governor's task force will meet tomorrow. Executive Director of New York State Public High School Athletic Association, Robert Zayas, will be at that meeting, and they will update us in our conference meeting, which will be later this week. As of that, that's what I have for us now. We have the scoreboard. The solar power scoreboard is currently on district property, and we're waiting for a few parts, and that installation should take place over the next few weeks.
Just to follow up, I looked at my notes and the tests that New York State is providing through the Department of Health are rapid tests. So the PCR tests would not be applicable to those situation we're talking about.
Thank you. Are any board questions for Mr. Bramoff?
How are the offseason, the, the workouts going?
Your offseason workouts, thank you for asking, Sandy. The, the offseason workouts are going well. They're very small cohorts. At this point, it's mainly girls' basketball, boys' basketball. And we have a few other things going. I know we have, we have a field hockey cohort that is starting up with working with both the principals and superintendent. We decided that even indoor, outdoor, no matter where it takes place, everybody's got to wear the masks. Coaches, everybody, and it's just safer. There's no contact. You know, for example, if we're going to do a basketball workout, we try to limit to the amount of baskets that we have. And it's been going well. Again, we're preparing for that January 4th date, but we're also going to be monitoring everything.
Eric, how does it work with, with the modified schedule with contests? Do you kind of, I guess you just have to be prepared for, regardless of what we're doing, the school we're playing against, we have to, is there kind of a threshold, like if their rates are a certain point, we're not, we're going to cancel that game? Or does the state cancel that game? How does that work?
Well, when you're talking about the varsity level and the modified schedules, I'm confusing some terms here because I call middle school modified. So let's just address the varsity levels and we'll work our way down. Essentially, we're giving a contracted league season. We still have the ability as a district to schedule our full allotment for basketball. Let's say it's 20 games. We could schedule 20 games. Obviously, it probably wouldn't be a wise decision, given the information that we have in front of us today. But we have not been directed specifically on how to react to our opponents. Maybe they have an uptick in their school or something changes on their end. The only thing that I can speculate, and this is 100% speculation, is that the athletic directors are going to have to be in contact continuously, leading up to every single contest. I think, I think if we are able to run contests this year, it's going to be a very individual case basis with the hopes that we could fulfill some percentage of a league season. Outside of a league season, I don't really see much opportunity for postseason. But again, I haven't been given the specific guidance on that, and I will, I'll bring that back to section 11. And we do have some frequently asked questions that, that I can bring to Director Tommy Combs.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Bramoff? Okay, Jeff, just taking one step back quick, and then we can get on to the educational report. I think it's important that what we're doing in our district and what Mr. Wilkins staff is doing, that maybe we could just give the public an update as to what we're doing in terms of cleaning the buildings and how that process works that we were doing currently.
So I think in terms of trying to prevent or minimize the extent to which the virus can spread in buildings, the most important factor is ventilation. So the research suggests that having HEPA filters in the classrooms is probably the most important thing we can do in addition to opening the windows. So as per some comments a couple of months ago, we have purchased enough HEPA filters to have one in every classroom. And we are encouraging teachers to keep the windows open, and we have had some issues with maintaining temperatures and we're continuing to adapt to that. But the practice moving forward is to continue to do that, because we know that it trend, that it, that it's likely, that it is most likely that the virus will go from one person to another in the air. Surface transmission is not as much of a concern, but still a concern. And so our custodial staff has misters that they purchased at the beginning of the year, and they use those every morning to disinfect each and every classroom, as well as the, the normal cleaning on an enhanced basis. So we did hire two additional custodians. I think we hired actually one and another one is, is about to be hired to assist us in making sure that we continue to clean at a heightened level, if you will. So that's, that's a summary of, of what we're doing.
Great. Any questions by any members of the board on that? Great, thanks. Okay, let's move on to 7.1, the educational report.
So we had initially planned to do both buildings tonight, but tonight we're going to do just the middle school, high school, so grade six through 12. And I had asked the, the building principal, Ms. Carriero, to work with the assistant principals, the teachers and the students to provide an overview to the Board of Education. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Carriero.
Happy Monday. So we worked on this, thinking about where areas of growth were for our remote learning process, where we came from, from last year. So Ms. Westhoff and Mr. Bynum spearheaded this. They got student feedback from different various students that you're going to hear from, because we think that's the most valuable. It's a short video explaining everything as well as teacher feedback. So if we remember in the fall, when we went into this band-aid of remote learning, we went into an office hours slash some live instruction, but mostly asynchronous instruction where teachers were on Google Classroom, uploading independent work with then supplements of small group instruction to have that. We found that sorry, Mr. Fisher. We found that was the most useful, and from the reopening task force, we realized synchronous learning was the best way to go. So our students at middle high school follow a bell schedule. Our sixth through eighth grade, we had in-person instruction with some students possibly streaming that instruction. And then the high school, as you know, is a hybrid model. This week, we are implementing Wednesdays being every other week in person for the M through Z cohort and the A through L last name cohorts. What you will find is we are learning as we go. So audio has been a little bit of a thing for certain classrooms and certain teachers, as well as learning different programs. You're going to hear about a program called Pardeck. This program is an extension of Google Slides that allows teachers to embed formative assessments and real-time questioning. So students that are synchronous learning that are in the actual classroom in person, while students that are remote are able to interact with each other, and it makes for a better learning environment, as well as Google breakout rooms. So these are, we're all on Google Meet, but then it can create small group instruction where the kids are talking either in literature circles or working on a different math problem all together. So they have that collaborative atmosphere that we can best replicate within the classroom. So without further ado, here is our remote learning presentation.
Learning updates. Izzy is going to kick off our presentation by showing us what a day in the life of a remote learner looks like.
Hi, this is Isabel Kaplan. I'm just, I just got up for remote school. I'm doing the hybrid program. And since today is a Friday, I am in, I'm at home. And I just got up, I get to sleep in a little more on remote days, which is nice. And right now, I'm going to take you through what my remote day looks like. I'm going into geometry for first period, and he uses his last name. I prefer to use the last name because I think it's easier than finding the link. I have an alarm every time it's about to have a class, like when the bell would ring at school, because I can't hear it at home. So it lets me know that the period's about to end, and I should start packing up and get ready for my next class. Since today's a P-Day, I have PE. And when I have PE, we can't, and I'm remote, we can't have a Google Meet. So instead, when you're remote, you have a assignment to do. Like, we have the assignment this week to exercise for two hours. I, during lunch, go to either Mr. Stewart's or Mr. Labattie's Google Meet for math lab or Spanish lab. And it's a really good opportunity to go and ask questions.
Now that we've heard from Izzy, let's see what our teachers have to say about remote learning. When we checked in with our teachers, they were happy to report that remote learning was going better than expected. While they do wish that kids would keep their cameras on, because that allows the teachers to ensure that the students are engaged, they mentioned that Wednesdays are productive when they're all remote, as students are all on the same platform. The biggest takeaway is that last year taught us a lot about remote learning, and the hybrid model helped us prepare to engage students remotely. Now that we've heard from the teachers, let's check in with Virginia and Sabrina for some middle school remote learning feedback.
Remote learning feedback. So we made a few different slides, and they each have like different categories. So the first slide is like good things that we really enjoy about it. So we really like how like the screen presentations, they like work really easily.
And how if, like, if Ms. Witty is on there, we can't hear something, or if we don't understand it, she can like answer questions in the chat.
Yeah. And another thing that we like is the Google breakout rooms, because like, we can't really like get into groups. But now like the remote kids and the in-person kids can all like be in the same, like little group for a group project or something.
And then we also like that the teachers are using like the Pardeck presentations, because they don't really glitch or anything, and they, the teachers will like put on questions, and then we can answer them without having to talk or like, or having it glitch or anything.
Yeah. But there are also a few things that we'd like improved. Oh, so teachers can monitor student screens during tests, and it'll only allow them to go on certain tabs. So Virginia, I thought that they could do more of that.
Yeah, because kids could just be like playing games or doing other stuff if they're supposed to be doing work. And it's not the same as like in class where the teacher can like tell that you're doing your work.
Next slide is homework, and I really like how Google Classroom can like tell you when it's due.
If like, when you're at home and you have like distractions, like siblings, or you want a snack or something.
Yeah, because in school, like you would be like, well, I'm in school, so I'm just going to get all my homework done. But then when you're home, you're like, you're, you're like used to like being at home, being able to just want, do whatever you want at home, and you're not really used to like having to like work when you're home. But other than like, but the teachers are doing an amazing job at this, and I, it's probably really hard to be
Yeah, to have like class in class and at home.
Having to monitor a computer and like the class can be very difficult. Bye, thank you.
Last, but certainly not least, Sophia's going to tell us a little bit about the high school perspective on remote learning.
I think it's good. I mean, personally, I like not waking up that early. Like usually I wake up at 6:00 AM, now I wake up at like 7:00 AM. It's just nicer. Also, I like having, like getting off earlier. Like, we would get off at like almost 3:00, and now we get off at like 2:30, and it's nicer. I think sometimes like teachers kind of forget about the online students, and they're like, oh, like, let me pick just the people that are raising their hands in the class, and I'm like, I know the answer, but I'm not telling you. And so I don't get like participation grades. I'm like, oh, God, that's awkward. Um, well, last year, I was kind of like all over the place. I didn't really have like one specific class. I kind of, it was just kind of like Google offices. Like, we didn't really have to go, it wasn't mandatory. And I like how this year is mandatory. It's more like, it's better, I feel like, because I, I feel better personally in like a strict environment. So I feel more comfortable learning, just things like that.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right, so that pretty much sums it up. We wanted to give four different perspectives with four different types of learners that we have currently. So Izzy was our blogger, or like our influencer, who you saw a day in the life. Virginia and Sabrina were our middle school feedback, while Sophia is completely remote to give you that feedback.
Thank you, Brittany. Any que- well, questions from the board, or anyone would like to ask anything with respect to that?
No, go ahead, Chris. First of all, they were all adorable, and I, I applaud them participating in, in the video, and it's really helpful to kind of have them bring it to life. You know, completely anecdotally, I've heard from many parents that that while the spring was an experiment for everybody, that, you know, our staff and our our teachers and administrators really learned from that, as did the families. And that this year has been, you know, kind of a home run in being able to learn and pivot and improve. And so I've heard a lot of really positive feedbacks. I want to thank everybody for supporting that. I'm curious overall what the sense is of just level of participation. Either on the days that that students are remote or those that are choosing to be remote, are we seeing kind of more kids missing things or they miss part of the day or, you know, do you have a sense of like really high levels of engagement? Just to, just to kind of set expectations.
I think we're at a much higher participation rate than we were at when we went into March. We need, it's called the meeting of the minds. So it is myself, Mr. Godwin, Ms. Westhoff, Dr. Mears, as well as our guidance office. And that time we talk about every student that's not participating and what structures we have in place. I don't think it's only like a handful of students. There are certain classes where students are possibly trying to skirt and not be a part of. And we are marking children absent that might have their video off. And then when teachers, and then we follow up. So it's a little bit more of a better follow up and follow through. And I think our guidance staff has been working really hard to make sure that those holes are being fixed. And for families that are struggling with getting students to motivate, we definitely put in several different structures in that and document.
Welcome to Pearson's Remote Learning Update. Izzy is going to kick off our presentation by show.
And again, technology is not perfect, which we know from the beginning of this course.
Brittany, what, in in terms of preparedness for in the event that we need to close for a few days or under you know, some kind of future event, not that we're planning that now. We're ready for that or what where where is, you know, we're putting time in, preparing for that, preparing students, preparing staff, just talk to us a little bit about that plan.
Yeah, so for the middle high school, the day that we had to go fully remote, it was very easy. It wasn't very glitched at all because our students all were prepared for it in the sense that even our in person students had to have been logging on to a remote learning aspect of it. Our teachers have been practicing since day one to make sure that everyone had the Google link. In the sixth through eighth grade, there were remote synchronous learning documents so that they're able to see which color pod they're in and where their Google Classroom link is. The same goes for the high school. There's a replica of that as well and everybody's used to it. I think we only had three or four glitches when we went to fully remote. So I have no doubt that we're going to be able to do it. I think the hard part is going to be if we're fully remote, fully locked down. We're going to have to implement the same type of meetings that we did during the spring, which were, we had an E and L meeting for E and L learners every week with our E and L staff to make sure those families are up and running with remote products. So if they needed a hotspot or if they needed anything else like their computer, we have those structures in place. Are struggling special ed learners that we make sure that each has their own remote learning plan with their special ed teacher. And then any other learners that might not be motivated that we do our meeting of the minds once a week. But I think we have that all that in place and our remote learning plan is in place for every child. So I think we'll be okay. I'm not concerned about it. Mr. Godwin or Ms. Westhoff, do you have anything to add with that?
Oh, I think you covered it, Ms. Carrera.
And in terms of the I B classes, the BOSI's programs, all of our students, that's all moving along. And that's able to transition to remote, fully remote if necessary.
So I think the great part about the hybrid model, which we decided on, it allows for the full international backwater program. And Wednesdays historically for the entire high school have been fully remote, so we're able to meet all those needs. And we've been meeting with the I B staff to make sure the internal assessments, which are one of the big assessments, especially during lockdown, because that's how our diploma candidates last year were graded. On is set as well as working with our science staff to make sure lab requirements will be met.
And and so that the public knows where you, you, the administration is watching to make sure that we're not having children falling behind. Or if they are, we're implementing additional resources so that, you know, things that we hear in other districts, not ours. We're watching for those and then accounting for those.
Absolutely.
So just to add on with the the BOSI's piece, the district will have to coordinate with BOSI's to see how they're going to deal with a district that is classified, for instance, in an orange zone. When perhaps the BOSI's homeschool might not be, and that's a possibility. If the governor drills down into more specificity and narrows the scope of what, what areas are orange, yellow and red. So theoretically, if Sag Harbor was orange and the BOSI's location, the school was yellow. How would they treat that? And I don't have the answer to that yet.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm just going around and see if the board has any questions. Sandy?
No, I, it was a great video, great presentation. I love seeing the kids like that. It looks like we were getting a handle on this remote learning, so it's good to see.
Chris?
No, I thought it was terrific. Thanks.
Susan?
It was great. I liked seeing the kids as well. I think we've come a long way as regards to remote learning from the spring of last year to now. So great job.
Jordana?
I've got nothing to add. Thanks for the presentation.
Yorgos?
It was great. I really liked it. Thank you. It was good to know like what's happening for the kids that decided to do the remote.
Great, Alex?
Nothing for me.
My, my only thought was I know we're perfecting the remote learning now. Which is the environment we're in, at least for the next year. Is there anything that we should be aware of or you're thinking of, you know, planning forward a year out or two that we, you know, for other programming or any kind of programming we should be looking at now that would roll out in a year or two? Or if there's not, that's fine, maybe come back to us at a later date, something along those lines.
I think that's something we're going to think about. I think we're hoping and maybe wishful thinking that sooner or later we won't have to be remote. So we'll hopefully do professional development to make sure our I Bs more aligned with our middle school and the academic rigor again, so we can focus back on that.
Great, thank you. Okay, and with that, then it seems like we will move on to our, well, the elementary will be rescheduled that at a later date for our presentation. And we will move on to our consent agenda item. So is there a motion for consent agenda items eight point two through eight point one four?
So I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
If you could open up the voting, please, Mary. Oh, any, any discussion, sorry. Anybody? No takers. Okay, so we will open up the voting.
I'm just waiting for Chris.
I already voted. It's not on my screen anymore.
What, what did you choose? And I can choose it for you.
I I chose A to approve it.
Okay. That's unanimous.
Okay, item nine point one, which are, is our committee reports. We will have had all of the committees hopefully have met when we meet again in December, so we can update then. As well, we'll move on to item thirteen point one, which is our public input number two. Is anybody from the public that would like to say anything, ask any questions to the board or administration? Now would be the time to do that. Yes.
I'm sorry, I just want to say that the communications committee did already meet. We've had one meeting and we have another one next Monday. So that meeting is up and running. The charter is being reviewed to by all the committee members, along with compiling a survey. To have the board approve to go out to the parents and community members and students. Anything else, Scott? I think that was it, right? Scott and I are both chairing that. Yes, that's it. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. And that's our newest committee, so that appreciate the work on that.
Yep.
And I know everybody else, I saw the schedule go out that other committees are starting to meet, so that'll be, that'll be great. I didn't see any hands or comments for public input two. So with that, let me just get my agenda here. I can't read it. We will be moving into, I'll be asking rather for a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person and litigation. At that point, if the motion carries and we go into executive session, the board will come out of executive session. No action will be taken. Aside from the fact that we will vote to close the public hearing at that point, but no other action will be taken from the public. So with that, I would ask, is there a motion to convene into the executive session as previously outlined?
So moved.
Any discussion? Mary, please open the voting.
That's unanimous.
Great. So with that, everybody have a good evening. Members of the board and invite keys to the executive session. You've received a link. Please log in and we'll see everybody there.
I thank you, everybody.
Thank you.